I called order the meeting of the city of Columbiana City Council on this February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to ask Diane to give us the invocation and then we'll have our scout representatives lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Diane?
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Gentlemen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
What's your troop number, gentlemen?
Twenty-two.
Okay.
Diane, may you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Sauter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Kristen?
Here.
Patilio?
Here.
Tanner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You have all received a copy of the February first City Council meeting minutes. I would like to ask if there are any questions or comments on those minutes, corrections? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. We have no communications this evening. I'd like to move to the reports of commissions and board. First, you received a copy of the Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions on those minutes? Okay, hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Next, we have the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions on those minutes? They also will be accepted as submitted. And lastly, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting Minutes of February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Any questions on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be accepted also as submitted. Next, we're moving to recognition of persons designed to appear. I have here that we have Casey Kelvington of Calco Transportation to discuss the Calco Express.
First and foremost, thank you all council members for meeting with us. My name is Casey Kelvington. I'm one of the owners of Calco Transportation. We've been prevalent in the community for several years. We provide wheelchair transportation. We have contracts with Mercy Health, a lot of the area nursing facilities, things of that nature. We also have party buses, so if you need any cards, let me know. And recently, we've been talking with different locally owned, you know, restaurants, the Birdfish Brewery, things of that nature, working with the same thing over in Boardman, Ohio. And we came up with the idea, that's Keaton Schindt, by the way, they run my Youngstown office, and we came up with the idea of offering up a service called Calco Express, specifically to run as of now on Fridays and Saturdays. There will be a membership fee. And it's for the community of Columbiana. It's also going to be for the community of Boardman. And it's just allowing people to go out to these locally owned places, have a good time, have a couple of drinks, call our number. We come pick them up, take them to their next destination, wherever that may be. There's about eight in Columbiana that want to be involved, and there's five of right now in Boardman that want to be involved. So they can go out, they can have their fun, they can get home safe and sound. They don't have to worry about drinking and driving, and it really promotes local business, and that's what we're all about. We're family owned and operated. We love these communities, and we just, you know, thought, what can we do? What else can we do to provide a good service for these people? So we brainstormed it. We came up with that idea. Another one we have is also called Home Sweet Home, and that one is if people are out and about, they've had maybe a few too many drinks, they don't want to leave their car there, but they know they shouldn't drive. They call our service, we come pick them up with a lead car, we get their car back to their home with them as well. If they have friends with them, you know, we're going to charge for the extra stops and things of that nature. And overall, the communication that we have got from the communities has been nothing but positive. Everybody thinks it's a very, very good service. You know, speaking with the local police force and everything, they're pulling people over left and right. So we really can help in these communities, not only to promote local business, but also, you know, provide a safe transportation for these people as they go out in the community and as we're growing our local businesses. So that's what I would like to present to you today. And yeah, I just really want your blessing. I think it's an amazing thing that we have here in Columbiana and Youngstown as a whole. I mean, I'm proud, proud to be a part of Youngstown. And by Youngstown, I mean all of it. So thank you so much for your time. I don't know how this works. I've never done it before. Do I take questions, or do I just go sit back down?
I'd like to start it off a little bit. We've talked back and forth about this for, what, a week or two?
Yes.
And at the time, you originally asked me if you needed to go to Planning Commission, and I was pretty certain you did not, and I think that's still true. However, today I finally sat down and went through our ordinances. And the description of what you're trying to do is covered under chapter eight, six, six, taxi cabs, and it requires a license that's ten dollars per year per vehicle.
Okay.
And it also needs to be approved by the police chief, and I don't know what, if they do a background check or anything like that.
Okay.
But he would issue the license. There's a requirement for insurance and that sort of stuff. So anyway, I made up, I copied it, and I'll provide it to you so that you can follow through.
Absolutely.
What will your, what will your fees be?
For the membership, for the first fifty members for Calco Express, we're looking at thirty dollars per membership. Then the next fifty would be at a forty-five dollar rate, and just kind of play with it and really see what works. We don't want to gouge anybody. Again, we just want people to be able to go out and have a good time, spend their money locally, you know, gain more local business. And as far as the Home Sweet Home, let's say that you were to give me a call. It would be thirty-five dollars to come pick you up. And if you had friends with you that needed to get home as well, we're thinking probably around ten to fifteen dollars per extra stop. For Calco Express, it would be a monthly fee. We would like to get a credit card on file and then just automatically charge that card every month. And if they, they're not really utilizing the service, obviously, they can get out of it. We're thinking something maybe like a thirty-dollar fee just to get out of it and fill that spot.
Is there going to be the possibility of a satellite office here in Columbiana?
We actually, we have an office in Cleveland. We have an office in Youngstown. We're right across the street from Akron Children's Hospital in Boardman. So we're already established there. However, Fridays and Saturdays, we would just come down to this area and just kind of wait for the phone calls to come in. And then with Home Sweet Home, that would be, you know, a service provided every single day that's needed.
How do people know about you?
Through the local businesses that we're currently talking to and working with. They're willing to help promote it, and Birdfish being one of the main ones, they've done a really, really good job over there. And, and yeah, you know, just get with all these different places that want to work with us and have them internally promote for their clientele that's coming in.
Can they look your number up somewhere?
Yes, we are currently having cards made, the membership cards, and that's going to have the phone number on it for, you know, for anybody that thinks that they want to be a member. And then they would just call that number. It would come straight to our phone, and then we'd figure out where they are and go pick them up.
So if they need to be a member. So it's not like one night I said, oh, I need a ride. They have to have a membership.
For Calco Express, yes. And then the Home Sweet Home, not necessarily. You can just give us a call. We provide the same service. It's a little more of a personal service. So, you know, you and, you know, you have friends or family or whatever here at the vineyards, a couple glasses of wine, need to get home, don't want to leave my car, let's call Calco and get the Home Sweet Home service.
And that's any day of the week?
Yes.
So just so I understand, Councilman Bain kind of stole part of what I wanted to discuss. For the Calco Express, you'll have your own cars, correct?
Yes, we already do.
All right, so that's where you'll basically register them as taxi cabs?
Yes.
Okay. And the party buses are registered?
That, I mean, that's something more of, you know, a specific event or charter event that we do. We do tons of weddings already. We work with, I always call it the Dutch house, but the best western, we do all of their wedding transportation. And so like I said, we're, we're known in the community as that, but let's say, you know, personally, that you wanted to get a party bus and do local wine tours are very popular. You know, you could call and book one of those. If you want to do a sporting event, concert, things of that nature. I mean, we're not in the business of saying no. We do it all.
Okay. And then the home would basically be your own veh- our own vehicles?
Your vehicle, and we have company vehicles as well.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thanks for looking that up, Dick.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I should have done it sooner.
No, it's okay. It's okay. Through our company, I know we already have a one-point-five-million-dollar umbrella policy for insurance, but I will take a closer look at this and do what I need to do.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. And again, you guys, this, I've been all over the country. I've been in many cities. I love this town. So, thank you.
That's true. Plus, thank you, folks, for coming. Yeah, some other guests here.
So go ahead and step on up, guys. So these two strapping young gentlemen are scouts from troop twenty-two. There we go. These two strapping young gentlemen are scouts from troop twenty-two in New Waterford. They actually visited a council meeting a few, several years ago, I guess now, with Doug and I for just one of their requirements that was to visit a council meeting. So the taller of the young men is Connor Natilio. You might recognize that name. He is my son. Yeah. And then Mason Button is with him as well, and they are both going for the first class rank in Scouts, and one of the requirements is there in front of, in front of you, Rick. So what, if you want to, I can read that, or I can read it to you?
Yeah. Their requirement is they visit and discuss with the selected individual approved by your leader. That's probably somebody important, and it's an elected official, judge, attorney, civil servant, principal, who teaches the constitutional rights and obligations of the U.S. citizen.
So the leader that approved them couldn't be any less important. That would be me. But because these boys have both known me for a very long time, I didn't want to be the one, I wanted them to actually talk to elected officials that they really didn't know. So I thought it'd be kind of interesting to have them attend a council meeting and talk to all of us and kind of, you know.
I think it's particular with Dick McBane, it would be great to leave that off on some general thoughts that he has regarding your constitutional rights and obligations.
Sure, I do. First, first, are you familiar with the Bill of Rights from history class? It's a list of ten things which, by the Constitution, are guaranteed. You're right, it includes things like freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom to assemble, the right to petition government, and the right to bear firearms, a whole lot of other, well, a bunch of things there. But if you've already had it in school, I'm not going to try to go through and reteach it to him. One of the things which are not, is not necessarily in the Bill of Rights is you have the right to travel. You don't have to stay in one spot. You can, you can travel any place in the country that you wish to travel in. You also have the right to get a passport that would allow you to travel to other foreign countries. In terms of responsibilities, you're responsible to obey all laws, both at the federal, state, and local level. That includes doing things like obeying the speed limit and stopping for pedestrians in crosswalks and things of that sort. You have, you're expected to be loyal to the, to the country and support the Constitution of the United States. And if you're asked to serve on a jury, you are required to serve on the jury. You don't have a right to say, no, I don't want to do this. They have the right to tell you that because they don't want you, but not the other way around. And I, there's probably a whole bunch of others that I hope these guys have been thinking about. If you can go through a name.
Well, you're talking to elected officials, so one of those rights is the right to vote, which is a very important right when you reach the age of eighteen. So that's one way of expressing your voice and, you know, impacting who the leaders are in your communities and in your government.
The right to vote actually is an obligation. You really are obligated to cast your vote for who you want. That's the only way that you can make your voice heard in the government, is to elect or not elect the people that you want or don't want. That's really very, very important.
Any other comments? Good, good input. I think that's excellent.
How about questions that you might have?
I don't really have anything. I don't really have any questions, but if Mason does, then Mason should.
I just threw you under the bus.
Yeah. Show them how good you are, Mason. Come on.
Come on, Mason. Do you have a question?
That's a good one.
Nothing.
So you really want the answer? We are entitled to pay of twenty dollars a month for, for this job.
Before taxes.
Before taxes.
Are you interested?
I'm not.
We, we actually all, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I, everyone else up here would agree with me that one of the other responsibilities that I think we all have is, is to serve our communities in some ways, that some people will do that in the military. But I think service is a responsibility of American citizens, and this, for me, is one of the ways to serve my community, along with being, you know, you guys as a leader. I believe I serve my community that way, and everybody up here serves their community in some way or another, besides just sitting up here twice a month.
One of the ways to serve is to volunteer at your church, or volunteer at, like Meals on Wheels, or something that benefits the community. That's a great service that you can get into.
I think that's all very good. Any other questions, Mason?
Is your thumb under the bus?
Okay. Well, you look like you got another one.
That's okay. Yes, you have a question.
That was good.
Very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight, and we hope that we've helped you in some way, and we'll look forward to some, someday, one of you being, being sitting up here, sitting up here. So you can, Barry's shaking his head. Very good.
Are you going to get a patch for this, or?
It's...
Probably not.
Well, they will, yeah. They will in the fact that this is a requirement for the rank advancement. So with completing this, I think both of them are very close to first class, which is officially halfway toward Eagle Scout. So it's, it's a really important rank for them to achieve, and it also gives them certain other, other things that they can do in scouting. So it gives them more rights as a scout as well. So it's, it's an important rank for them to achieve. And they both promised me at some point that they're going to be Eagle Scouts. So, you know, we'll see how that goes.
Keep up the good work.
I have confidence.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming tonight and helping us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for helping us achieve this rank.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Mason, is your first name spelled M-A-S-O-N? M-A-Z-I-N? Okay, and your last name? Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's the folks that we have making presentations tonight. Very interesting. At this point in the agenda, I'd like to turn to the manager's report and ask Lance to give his update.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm glad there wasn't a written test on the Bill of Rights today. I'm like, what did I miss? So in your packet, you have a ribbon-cutting announcement on February twenty-second at ten a.m. That's out at the Red Brick Commons, where Sweet Melissa's is going to be. So that's next Tuesday. Great news, the bids for the East Park Avenue Springfield Road, Heck Road, ODOT paving project came in. They actually came in under, under engineer's estimate, which will give us a little bit of room to complete that, you know, to complete that project on budget. So there is a emergency legislation to enter to, into a contract with Corilla Contractors on the agenda. We're, to follow up on that project, we do, going to be this week, we're going to be looking at the letters of interest for construction inspection for that same project. And we should have a contract with them, whoever that might be, probably sometime in March. I'm super excited to announce that the two stormwater grants that we submitted for the EMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Programs under the DR four-five-zero-seven were both awarded at eighty-seven and a half percent. So that's federal will be seventy-five percent, and Ohio will kick in twelve and a half. And we will be able to do our Beverly Ray Stormwater Project, which will start at around the, oh, let's see, at the top of the hill in the cemetery, and then head east and go down Beverly Ray, Beverly and Ray, and then end up going past Settler, the printers, towards the railroad tracks. So we do have, we have those drawings, and we did submit those. And then the Prospect Street YNS Railroad Stormwater Project, that's basically starting at Birdfish or Oaks Wilding, heading straight south, heading down the YNS Railroad, and then underneath the Norfolk, Norfolk Southern Railroad. So that was a, I think that's the third or fourth time we submitted, and we appreciate everybody that's helped on doing that. And also give the previous administrations and councils hats off for doing the two-foot contours of the survey back in, oh, I think it was around two thousand and ten, they flew the entire city with an airplane. And it was a surveyor that, that conducted, plotted out two-foot contour lines, and that was critical in this application. And then they also, the other councils, basically did a stormwater project and ranked them one through ten. And I'd be happy to report that this is two and three priority, and we just finished it up one. So it's quite an accomplishment to get those done. Beverly Ray Storm is estimated at two-point-one million, and the Prospect Street YNS Railroad is the one-point-six-million-dollar project. So we do have to, you know, continue to move forward. I'm not exactly sure what the timeline will be, but we will be, you know, just checking off the list of what we have to do. I believe there is a public notification pretty soon that we have to send out that we're going to be doing those projects. So again, thank you, and do want to thank Jesse from the Street Department, and also Howland Baird for actually going down to Ohio EMA. And this project was supported by the County EMA. We do appreciate that help, and also letters of support from Congressman Johnson and Mr. Tim Ginter. So it's been, it's been a long road, but just, just happy to have that announced this, this week. So with a, let's see, the city hall's still closed, the public until further notice, except for the drive, drive-up window, mail drop service, and meeting, council meetings, and planning commission meetings. And we've been working with the film crew for the Christmas Angel movie. It's been quite an experience. Lots of people to thank in that. Police Department, guys have been key to that, very flexible. It's been a moving target for the last couple of weeks, but it's been, it's been fun. And, you know, I want to thank the Park Department, Electric Department, Street Department, and the churches, and Columbiana Women's Club, all, all the residents. And in particular, thanks to a council member, Dick McBain, who volunteered to be Santa for Saturday. And, and I asked him Thursday about six o'clock at night, so two days before. So thank you for doing that. And really want to thank the citizens and everybody, business owners, storefront owners, for being patient with the film crews and, and, you know, the intermittent traffic control, you know, and road closures. But they're going to be finishing up on Thursday, and they really, I think they really highlighted Columbiana, and I believe that they are filming right now in town, as we speak, in, in one of the storefronts. So you can, when you leave here, you'll see them on, on South Main Street. So Electric Department, today, we went up there and they actually started on decorating the tree to make it look like they were decorating the tree. So that was, that was pretty cool. And then again, there's been lots and lots of coverage, but lots and lots of people involved in, in the movie, including, you know, people from our community, and also, you know, the extras. I believe there were a few people there on Saturday, which, by the way, I mean, it was a late night. I think, I'm sure the police got home probably after one o'clock in the morning, in the Sunday morning. So we were, it was, it was quite an experience, but there were people in the crowd that had driven at least an hour and a half, I believe, to be there on Saturday night. So been pretty neat. I want to thank Manning Films for, you know, choosing us.
You left out that you had a small speaking role in the.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. It was a non-speaking part that turned into two, about six, six words. So it's quite impressive. Let's see. We touched base with the engineers on the pool plumbing out at the pool house. We actually met with them today, and, you know, we've been having problems with that heater for a few years now, and we just, we're handed the solution today with a engineer's estimate, and we went ahead and ordered a pole heater today. And they, they think we can get it in on time, and we appreciate them working with us and, you know, calculating and, and making sure it's the right size and stuff. And we do have some work to do. It's, it's got a, quite a lead time, but we think we can get it in there before the pole opens. So we did add the pool lifeguard rate legislation to adjust for minimum wage. That's on, on your agenda. Street Department, you know, thank you for everybody, all the departments that helped plowed, salt and plowed in the last couple of weeks. It's been a rough, you know, rough couple of weeks, rough month. And, you know, they did a And, you know, they did a, multiple departments were there to clean up the, the town, the sidewalks downtown and, and the streets. So it's, it looks like a military maneuver when they, when they come in and do that to, to remove that. But we've always done that. We've, you know, any large amount of snow, we've always taken it down from out of downtown and stacked it in a pile somewhere. So pretty large pile this year. I think we took a hundred loads out the first storm and probably closes that second one. Water Department, we repaired a couple of water lines, actually one today. They also helped with the snow and ice removal. Wastewater, we, we were putting this in the budget. We need to replace the Steiner. It's about fifteen years old and it conked out on us on Friday. So we went ahead and ordered that. Can't be without that. We use it almost, well, we use it in all the seasons. We mow with it, push snow with it. So we gotta get that ordered. Park and Cemetery, they're getting ready to hire for pool and part-time help. Perform nu- numerous tasks for the movies. You know, really appreciate flexibility with, with all staff in the city, so. See, met with the entrepreneur class about reworking the pool concessions. That was pretty neat. The Progress Committee is working with the, with the school on several different projects, but this most recent one is to work with entrepreneur class to kinda, kind of a fresh start at the pool concessions. And they met last Wednesday out there with Tim Reish. And then I was at the pool house today and they were out roaming around taking pictures. So they're, they're really into it. So that's, that should be neat. We, we have been discussing upcoming rates in the operation of the pool with Tim and, and the park board, and we're continuing to work through that. And again, thanks for the Electric Department for everything that they've done for the movie. You know, a lot of it's, you know, you get something done and then you have to either turn around and do it or change it or whatever, but everybody's been very flexible. Just wanna thank everybody for that. And I think that's it.
Very good. Any questions for Lance? May lose them to an acting career.
Yeah, right.
Hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Or maybe even dick. A new role. But I think of all of us sitting up here, I think we know why he's the best suited to be Santa.
Yeah, that's a funny story. So on, you know, we've been talking about, you know, do we need a Santa? Do we need a Santa? The answer's been no for pretty much until Thursday, you know. And so I called Tara McCoif Tourism, and he goes, I just shaved my beard. I'm like, oh. So, but that came to mind right away. So he was ready to walk on set. Didn't have to do any, do, do much, just jump into the suit.
He's been practicing ho, ho, hoes for years.
Okay, any other questions for Lance? I think the three point seven million dollars in wastewater treatment, it's just phenomenal. We set those goals to, I've forgotten, how many years ago we set out our priorities?
I think twenty twelve, I think it was twenty twelve, the former council, you know, did that. It was a long study and it's paying off because we were, you know, we're prepared. Because when, when we found the, the grants, it, it asked for these things and we said, oh, yeah, we have that, so.
And we wanna thank Lance for, you know, persevering to get these proposals and, you know, jumping through the hoops that the bureaucrats establish go through to get these grants. We appreciate his work.
Thanks. We, we couldn't expect, or, I mean, the Ohio EMA has been wonderful to work with and they've, you know, held our hand the whole way. So we really appreciate all the work that they've done on that. It's, I think this will be like the fourth stormwater project like this that's been done in Ohio and recently. This will be number three and four, I think, so.
Fantastic.
So three of the four have been in Columbia.
It will be, yeah. Th- this particular style of stormwater. So there are other, lots of other stormwater and flood projects, but this particular one is about, you know, installing, you know, stormlines. You know, some of them, you know, they may even have a, you know, you might have a program to buy houses and, and, you know, either raise them up or, or remove them. But the Ohio EMA has been, been great to work with, so.
I, I, I love these numbers, so I just wanted to ask you to repeat them. So it's what, three point seven million that, that the projects are gonna cost? What is, what's that actually gonna cost the taxpayers of Columbia?
About four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and we'll, you know, we'll plan on doing that in the budget, in capital improvement budgets over the next couple of years. So we do have some time on, I think, but you know, it's, it's money well spent and it's money we don't have to pay back, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Project getting done without going to the taxpayer to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look at all the things that we've done over the last four years or so, the, the amount of money we've spent, total amount of money we've spent is just, I mean, you, you just, those are numbers I don't even think about. But the numbers that we actually had to take out of our, out of our budget were a pittance compared to what we spent. The taxpayers reap all the benefits for that.
The comment about not charging the taxpayers to do it is really important because at the time, a lot of this work was done. There was a lot of discussion about putting in a fee based on the size of your yard and things like that, that you would pay for stormwater. And that was back in around two thousand and six or seven, something like that. So by cooler heads saying there's other ways to get this done and spreading it out over a longer period of time, it's, I think it's been very effective.
Agreed.
You know, the other thing is the input in the, the residents, you know, the that were always coming in, whether it be Mr. Pennell or or, or Mr. Guy, you know, that, that all, that all counts when you, you know, put it in your application, so.
Okay. Comments? Thank you. You received in your packet the Mayor's Court Report of January twenty twenty-two. Is there any questions on that report? It'll be adopted as submitted. And did you wanna talk anymore about the bid results at this point? It's on the agenda. I think you.
Yeah, I think bids came in under engineer's estimate and we, you know, the engineers reached out and did, did the background check and such. And they're recommending that we go with the, the lowest bidder, Corilla Contractors.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I wanna move to the review, the comment regarding the bill list of two fifteen twenty-two. Any questions on the bill list? Will also be accepted as submitted. We have no old business, so I'm moving to new business. I entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved second.
Dan, we call for the vote.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Now I would like to ask if we could read the first ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion second. Questions? Do you have any color roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one zero seven, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Corilla Contractors, five oh five Bedford Road, PO Box one seventy-nine, Brookfield, Ohio, four 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 oh three, for the necessary materials and constructions for the Coal East Park Avenue Springfield Road and Heck Road project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on that ordinance motion? Dan?
I, I just wanna, this is another one that was a, a grant, as I recall. And because it's, it's so much fun, this is a little over a billion dollar project. How much of this taxpayer is Columbia paying for it?
Let's see. I think it's fifty thousand dollars.
Seems like a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Very good. Nice comments. Any other?
Do math. Math in the bill of rights.
As long as you keep getting the grants, you don't have to worry about the bill of rights.
Do you have any color roll?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one zero eight, first reading. An ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-one dash oh dash three zero two zero, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees at the Firestone Pool for the City of Columbia, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? Do you have any color roll?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Since there will be no action taken after the executive session, I would like to move and have our public comments and council comments at this time. So I think I can do that before we vote. Okay, is there anybody out there that'd like to say anything? They've all been sitting there quietly. Any public comment? Oi!
Yes, Mr. Will.
Yes, we will. We're starting soon. Yep, definitely. Which anybody in the city can get on columbianoiah.gov and there's a nice reporter tool on there for the potholes and you can do that and it's.
Yeah, that was a doozy. I know that.
Now, that's why that guy comes every, he's our loyal, our loyal folks back there. Thanks for pointing that out. I don't know, Columbia has potholes?
Well, we call them Grand Canyons of Ohio.
They were on East Park today.
Yeah, I saw them.
There were some coal pads done on East Park today.
I thought I saw someone on Elm Street, too.
Good question. Any other comments from the public? Anybody out there? Is the meeting going okay for the troop? Everything's okay? Good, good. Ah, any comments from council members?
I'll throw a couple out real quick. So I wanna point out too, Kalko was actually out at the movie shoot on Saturday during, during the show board. So Bryce was a nice man. I, I took the, I was got to stand up for the one, the one ride back and forth, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very good balance.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, I just wanna point out they, they, they do a great job and we're looking forward to seeing your service take off in town, so. But for my scouts, unfortunately Connor, you're stuck with me here. Mason, you can go and call your mom and let her know. We're gonna be going into executive session here in a minute, so you can take off whenever. Just don't get lost, I'll be all right. Don't feel bad if you do that. Um, yeah, you can watch. Yeah, it's fine. Just don't leave the building until someone's here to pick you up, okay? Okay. Um, that's it. I just wanted to cut him loose, so he wasn't waiting for us. Connor's stuck with me, but.
Shouldn't stand outside waiting for him?
Any other comments?
I, I just wanna say real, real quick, I missed some thank yous. Presbyterian Church, I think they were contacted Wednesday. Were able to be used for the movie. The tourism, the Chamber of Commerce been great. We have to point out Wish List, Rustic Birdcage and Artisan's Loft. Really supportive of the downtown filming and everything. And actually, Mrs. Claus was from Wish List and she actually got in the movie on, on, on Saturday night, too. So that was, that was pretty cool.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Wasn't it nice to have the theater to keep warm in?
Absolutely. It was being used, huh?
Yes, as you know, in the last meeting, we talked about the theater getting to be able to be used and it's fantastic. We had that resource and that was great. And I take Casey's comments out there about saying how nice Columbia is and we appreciate your comment saying that. And I think all of us know, we hear that a lot. And, but it is important that we save our downtown and keep the, keep that historic nature of Columbia, so we appreciate your comments, too. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'd have a, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the purchase of property, section one twenty-one point twenty-two, G two.
So moved. Second.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second. Second. Is this motion second? Dan, you call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.